Good afternoon, everyone. We're in the committee on the whole meeting of Tuesday, July 17th. Health and Squamish, priest Tilak Kmet, class of Homish, away my way. Welcome to the traditional territory of Squamish Nation. There is an agenda in front of the committee. I'm looking for a motion to adopt the agenda. And White Council, Ali, Secretary of Council, Black and Wolf. Albers in favor, opposed if any. Motion carries. Council President should be here in a moment. He does, let's see, he was going to go get late. First up, we have two delegations. Our first delegation is the Wood Fiber LNG lease proposal of Daryl Bay. And I'm just wondering, who's presenting for W LNG?
We're actually told that you're not the first delegation.
Oh, that's what is on my...
We don't mind.
Agenda.
The one online says that we're okay. One online.
I don't think it really matters.
It's the college.
Are you ready to go? Do you want to go? Or what's, is there anything on the screen?
No. We can go.
Yeah, please.
You're first.
Great, we'll go to our next delegation. Jeff Levine, Proceed to Fair Venture Company.
So it's actually a consortium. Hasimah Bahadur, Karim with Symphony Resorts as well.
Asimah, please join us at the table if you'd like.
And John Heilich, part of the other consortium, sends his regrets. He unfortunately can't be here today.
Oh, it is funny, the one online is opposite the one at Symphony.
So it's seven, I think.
Yeah, no worries. You can wash, paper, scissors, see who goes first.
Okay. Sorry.
Welcome.
Thank you. Can I, sorry?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, thank you. My name is Jeff Levine. I own Sea to Sky Venture Company. With me is Bahadur Karim, the owner of Symphony Resorts. And as I said earlier, John Heilich is unable to be here. He's another part of the consortium. So we're three different separate business entities that we've all come together over the last year. We were all individuals who applied. We responded to the request for expression of interest to lease property at Daryl Bay from the municipal government. Since that time, there's been some modifications or changes to the property ownership that was not the same as when the RFEOI came out. So part of it is the M O, Ministry of Transportation Infrastructure. They have a much larger portion of the foreshore, the land and the foreshore than anticipated. When this RFEOI first came together, we knew there was a number of different entities that all wanted this. This area is such an iconic entrance to Squamish. If you could just refer to the PowerPoint presentation, the first slide, it's a culmination of, I would probably say, the three of the biggest draws in tourism and visitors to our community. We have the Squamish Chief Provincial Park, we have the Sea to Sky Gondola, and Shannon Falls. And Symphony Resorts is planning on developing a, is intended to develop their resort right at the Cockney RV Park. With this, we just think this is such an incredible opportunity at Daryl Bay to add more adventure tourism. Squamish, even though we're surrounded by ocean and water, we have little public access left to the water. It's being taken up by different developers, which will have public access, but having true district-controlled public access and public enjoyment of the water, we think is a major benefit to us. So let me fast forward. During this RFEOI process, I organized, and I met with Bahadur, with the Symphony Resorts and majority of the other proponents, including Wood Fiber LNG, Sea to Sky Gondola, and we all talked about how we could all work together because, you know, it's a valuable area for tourism and industry at the same time. And how can we all work together to achieve our common purpose? And this is, and we did meet, and then all of a sudden, there was some issues with the land ownership and who owns what land. And it kind of just faded away. Of recently, recent times, there's been more, Wood Fiber has expressed more interest in having it. So that's when we've kind of revamped our intentions. We've identified some of the requirements to have it. One part of our, one part of our proposal, which we're really putting forward, is the proposal that John Heilich put together to have a water taxi ferry service leaving from Daryl Bay. And Ministry of Transportation Infrastructure, they have a, they have a order, a ministerial order that basically gives the conditions, what that area for the province can be used for, and it is solely for as a ferry terminal. So that is their primary, that is the use of it. So that's when we've, we did have a phone conversation with MOTI, and they were very clear about that. They were going to see if there could be any modifications to the ministerial order, but for now, the ministerial order says it can only be used as a ferry terminal. What we would like to do is have a ferry terminal, a ferry dock, a Squamish public ferry dock, that will be used, much like the Granville Island Aquabus. We have this incredible feature of all these three culminating areas that draws so many of our tourists and visitors to town, they don't even get to go, they don't go to downtown Squamish. They just stay there. So what we're proposing is, we're going to have this ferry terminal, much like Granville Island, and it's going to service from here, and then it can go service to the different areas into downtown Squamish. We have a lot of different developments. Those services will be great for visitors and tourists alike to get there. I know there is a new bus service planned, oh, sorry, not planned, but there is a new bus service implementing, but if we can get a quarter of those visitors from that area into downtown Squamish, I mean, it would be good for so many of our different businesses downtown Squamish. And not to mention, it gives the opportunity for visitors to go see the ocean. So let me just forward a little bit here. So this is, what you see here is a proposed, this is the overview of the Klawani Resort as well as Daryl Bay. We do know there's some issues currently with that. One big issue there is parking and getting across the highway, pedestrian overpass bridge. There's been a lot of different traffics. There's been Bunton Associates did a traffic study, I believe presented to this council. It is a dangerous intersection for rightfully or wrongfully, it's people trying to cross across the road, not at a signal, people doing U-turns. So what we've proposed, and as part of our proposal for Daryl Bay, not the resort development, but the Daryl Bay lease with the district, is we would build a 250-car parcade as well as a pedestrian overpass. Obviously, this is a very high level, we have to start somewhere. And we would build that, and that would be able to accommodate a lot of the issues with parking for the three different entities, the Gondola, the Shannon Falls, and the Chief, as well as having that additional pedestrian overpass. So that's kind of one thing that we would like to do. And now I'm just going to focus now more closely on Daryl Bay. So currently, Daryl Bay is an asphalt parking lot. What we would like to do is, and this would all be done at our expense, and if deemed we could give it, once it's done, we can give it back over to the district. We just want to keep, preserve this area as a public entrance to Squamish. So we would like to continue having some parking stalls up at the top above the railway tracks. We would keep having the ferry access to the emergency ferry route to be public. There's also 28 stalls of parking, ferry marshaling, if in the event they actually, if B C ferries needed to use that parking or that ferry. But primarily where that parking lot, the asphalt parking lot is, we'd like to turn that into a public park, complete with some trails, trails, interconnected trails that would go to the different Sea to Sky Trail, and some different trails that would connect into downtown Squamish. As well, we'd have the Squamish public ferry dock in that area, and that would be open to, it would be a public dock. We could build it, and we've, Bahadur and John, we've discussed it. If it's deemed to be a public amenity, we can turn it over to the district of Squamish or have some sort of lease maintenance agreement. So, yeah, that's kind of what we're wanting to do. Essentially, we want to create Daryl Bay to be, have unfettered access to the public. We want to work with, there's, there's one existing property owner that lives down there. We want to work with her to ensure she maintains her privacy and she has unfettered access to her place and her life is not disrupted. And the parcade, the pedestrian bridge, the park, and the public ferry dock will be built as phase one. And this is not something that would be, hey, let us finish this resort, then we'll do it. No, this will be a phase one, and we can start building as soon as we have the permits. Now, with Wood Fiber LNG, obviously, there are proponents for the same area. We're not, this is not an anti-LNG thing whatsoever. This is just, this is incredible, incredible opportunity for public access and amenities for Squamish. We're not opposed to working with LNG whatsoever. In fact, we had, like, two years ago, we all met together of how we could work together. It didn't end with any resolution because at that time, the LNG wanted to use that area as a laydown area to store excess material. And in meetings, I did chat with one of the representatives, and I said, this is not the area to do it. And their concern about working with us at that time was, as a laydown area, there was going to be so much equipment and materials and trucks moving, it would be a hazard to the public. And I agree, it would be a hazard to the public if you have all this rebar and gravel and trucks coming and going. Now I understand, I spoke with one of the representatives, that's not the case anymore. It's going to just be a worker ferry service. So we would have no problems working with LNG and have either on the ferry dock that we build, we could have a second float or a second arm. And I understand they have some, I know they have some security concerns. We could have it so that they could have the separate entrance, and they could have all their security infrastructures on that. And their workers are primarily, from what I've been told, is typically early in the morning, and then coming back, they kind of go on shifts. I don't think the public, the public would come into too much conflict. Barring that, if that wasn't up to their liking, there is a current, there is a existing emergency ferry terminal that, in talking, our conference call with MOTI, who currently has control of that, there was some conversations, what about if they just, and it was me bringing it up. From my understanding, the conversation was that they're going to possibly have access to use that and maintain that. Well, that's currently surrounded by barbed wire right now. They could use that as their area to egress into their ferries. There is some concern, obviously, this is where we kind of disagree, there is some concern about parking their six to 20 buses every day down there during workdays. And we don't think this is the right area. It's too valuable of an area for Squamish to allow it to be parking for buses that have wheels on them that can move away. There's other areas they can store them. It may not be the most convenient area. Also, what we were also talking about, thinking recently, is if we could create some sort of way for their buses to turn around above the train tracks, their employees can walk, like the two-minute walk, down to the ferry terminal. They don't necessarily need to be dropped off at the ferry terminal, and those are probably different than anyone else in the room who has to park at work. They could turn around at the top, and their buses possibly could go, their buses could go elsewhere. I really think it's too valuable of an area to keep buses parked and open it up only for buses.
Just call me some time.
Yeah, sorry. I draw on, I'm sorry.
For your council questions. I just have a quick question, and then see if you can answer, Council. What is the, what is the definition under the order in council, and except that you might be able to answer this?
I've got.
Or ferry terminal.
So if I may, so it says, it says, part two, so there's two parts. I'll read the second part. "As a condition of the transfer in section one," talking about the land, "the land must only be used by the Ministry of Transportation Infrastructure for the specific purpose of a ferry terminal. And once the land or any part of the land is no longer being used for that specific purpose, the Ministry of Transportation Infrastructure must transfer administration and control of the land or part of the land back to the Ministry of Agriculture and Lands, subject to the Minister's written acceptance of transfer." That's now Minister for Lands and Natural Resources. They've changed their names. And in our, so we've applied to MOTI as a, as Wood Fiber LNG.
So you're used, meets the definition.
Yes, it does. So we've, we've applied as an unsolicited application to lease that area from MOTI for the purposes of a public ferry terminal.
Questions, Council?
Sorry, Mike. It says use the land or part of the land. Can you read that?
Yes, so, yes, so, "As a condition of the transfer in section one, the land must only be used by the Ministry of Transportation Infrastructure for the specific purposes of a ferry terminal. And once that land or any part of that land is no longer being used for that specific purpose, the Ministry of Transportation can transfer it back over."
Oh, keep reading.
Oh, sorry. "The Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure must transfer administration and control of the land or part of the land back to the Ministry of Agriculture and Lands, subject to the Minister's written acceptance of the transfer."
And the other part goes to the district?
It doesn't, yeah, I would, I can't speak to that.
I'm not sure, I'm not, that's not written. So you're making.
So part of the land. Land or part of the land, that's correct in there, that's all.
Well, the remainder would just simply remain with MOTI.
Yes, actually.
The district controls the land above the section.
Above, we control the land above, but we're not talking about.
Above the renovator.
No, you control, there's.
We control it right down, but this order in council is for the water lease, and the foreshore is not.
It's strictly for the water.
Yes, I have, I do have an attached map.
So there's no, nothing in there that's saying come back to us because it was never ours, that we just, and it's, I'm assuming it's a different ministry now because it's no longer agricultural land, it's Flynn Road or whatever.
It's Flynn Row, yes. And so what, we did have a quite a long conference call at the beginning of the month, and during that conference call, it was brought up different opportunities for, you know, this is such an iconic entrance to Squamish, is there any opportunity to change it? And he would, the individual in charge of that city, he'd have to check, he's away currently. So I was hoping to get back some answers, see if it was possible to, to possible to do a ministerial order modification. And the reason why it's a ministerial order is the government can't lease its own land from itself because if it, otherwise it would be a water lease, a provincial tenure application, but they can't lease their property themselves, so they do a ministerial order.
Neil, did you want to add anything to that?
No, I just wanted to make sure we're clear. This, the, this order here just contains the water lot and the land associated with it. And it's just basically a transfer agreement, as Mr. Levine has indicated, between ministries. So if there's anything that happens here that affects MOTI's control of the water lot, the land is first back to Flynn Row. That doesn't have anything to do with the land that we have any control of right now.
What do you see as the time for this?
For us, we would be willing to go start building as soon as we have permits. I think Bahadur can speak to that.
If I can add to what Jeff's saying, I got a larger.
Yeah, Bahadur, you have to be sitting to speak just because the microphones can't figure out.
Okay, I apologize.
But maybe Robin goes in the back. Put over all the microphones on the table, we're going to pick up all.
Alongside each other, the Sea to Sky Gondola, the Squamish Chief, the Cypress Provincial Park, and us. So this will all be linked, and as we know from our discussions with Bunton, that right now there's a traffic issue, there's a parking issue, and to alleviate that, we're willing to build a bridge that goes right across as part of our development permit. So now we have three projects that are linked.
Pedestrian.
Pedestrian, so that would make it. This is the most beautiful spot in Squamish, and I think it should be there for people's enjoyment, and it should, it should really be loved. And the other thing is, Jeff and I have talked about having a bicycle route alongside there on the city's walkway path, so you can pick up bicycles at our place, go to downtown Squamish, leave your bike, come back. The water taxis that he's talked about from our place to downtown, and maybe even larger ferries into Vancouver. This is really a unique opportunity for us to preserve this area.
What she was asking about is time.
The time would be as part of our DP permit, and the reason we were held up last year is we've been negotiating with the city for the acquisition of the land. We've presented a fresh offer, which Neil has as of yesterday, and as soon as we get that wrapped up, we're ready to move forward with our DP process.
Thank you. Council?
Thanks. We currently have 15-minute transit to all of these areas. So how would, considering people can now go from downtown to the Gondola and the Klawani area in 15 minutes on a large bus, that's already basically part of our public transit system, with no parking and no cars, now, I guess it'd be great to have some parking area, but I'm not sure how the ferry would add, except for water. I mean, it's nice to take water transit. How long does water transit take to get to downtown?
Great question. Glad to ask. It's about 10, 15 minutes, similar in time, however, the people that, the prime, let's say 75% of the people that I would envision taking it, they're probably not as likely to hop on a public bus and go downtown Squamish as they would be. This is part of their adventure. This is a tourist adventure tourism thing. They're going on a boat ride. So I think the bus is very expeditious or efficient. This is about the experience, and this is, there's many different places they could go to with large communities being built at the oceanfront, waterfront landing, some of the different stuff, and the congestion that we currently have on our roads in downtown Squamish, if anyone's driven there on a busy Saturday and Sunday, you'll know, these people are completely, even though it's a bus, that bus, we still have it, it's not like one without the other. That bus will go there, and it's a completely different type of transportation, I guess.
More like the Victoria inner harder little floating bus that goes around. It's not replacing the bus system.
No, it's not replacing, it's like Granville Island as well. That's an experience. I don't know, the last time you've remembered taking a bus ride or compared to taking a, on a boat ride, which is a better experience? That's what we're about. We're hardwired for adventure. We want experience. I don't think it will be, it will replace it, but what Bahadur alluded to is one little thing as well, we're not right now, but we're also thinking it could be an opportunity for a ferry service to Vancouver at some point down the future.
And just one little quick question. So funding for this would be all private sector funding?
Hundred percent, yeah. The district isn't paying for anything. We would pay for the 200, so part of this, it's a, it's a part of a package. We'll build a pedestrian overpass, we'll build a 250-car parcade, we'll build the entire park.
So Will, you're talking about now?
It's part of the big proposal, so we don't want to get too off topic.
Yes.
I take the bus, the water taxi to Granville Island regularly. And one of the reasons I do that, because in Granville Island, it's impossible to find parking. So I leave my car up this side of the town, on the Vancouver side, take a water taxi, go there, do whatever I need, to hop on the taxi back, and it's a really, and enjoyment and efficient way to travel.
Question about the IOC, and I'm not sure if Neil can ask this, or you guys, or maybe W LNG. If, if, would the order in council allow, for example, someone to, this is a public dock, a ferry service, would it allow someone to go and launch a paddleboard from it or that type of thing? Would that still be allowed within that lease?
I, this is one thing I did have a conversation about. I believe so, but the, but as long as it's not like a business entity. It's a public access dock, so a public can go in there and use it, but I think where it comes down to is if you shape a business around a non-permitted use. But the public can do that. And I mean, we've spent, the district of Squamish has spent considerable amount of time, and I think we've got some very good traction. Look at our waterfront, how nice it is now. And this is just the natural extension of it. We never thought of ourselves as a waterfront community, but we definitely are.
Thank you very much, and you're bang on time.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you. And stick around, I know you're going to ask the next one as well, and maybe there's a bit of a collaborative conversation coming up at the end of it.
Absolutely.
Please join us. I'm not sure, Ally, who is in your group, but I'll let you as your group.
I have it in my hands. Is that three bags? Or was that four? It's funny, I think.
You can pull right up to the table so I can see it.
I'm sorry.
That's our hiding.
Do you do inspections now?
Sure.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Is it popping up?
Oh, there we go.
Really?
Fantastic. Thanks so much for having us today. So my name is Ally Meers, I'm the Community Relations Person, Wood Fiber LNG. To my right is Jenna Dorsetin, she is our Associate Vice President of Corporate Communications. We have John Mackay, who is our Vice President of Legal, and Karen, who is our Vice. You're a regulatory manager.
You just got Vice President.
No, Vice President and Regulatory. Yes, we're here today to talk about the proposed short-term use of the lower two parking lots at Daryl Bay.
Thanks, Ally. Thanks for the introduction. Thanks for the invitation. We, I don't know if you know that we only found out we were coming today, I think, four days ago? I was on vacation, so I didn't know until yesterday.
My understanding, you guys wanted to get on the agenda before the break came obvious.
We appreciate that. And I just want to recognize my colleague, John here, actually just flew in from his actual vacation with his family on the island for this meeting, so.
I'll let him take that up with his boss.
Yeah. And we do want to actually, things are, our boss does send his regrets. He unfortunately, or fortunately, has been on a waitlist for medical appointment that was today, so we couldn't reschedule, so sorry about that. So let's get started. Thanks, Ally. So why are we here today? Well, as you are aware, we are hoping to secure a lease for the lower two parking lots of Daryl Bay for four years starting in October. In terms of our position on this is that we are, we're quite pleased that what we're asking to use those two lower two parking lots for is consistent with your current zoning as well as the proposed future zoning under your OCP. We actually have a license of occupation for the, from the province of B C for the land and foreshore of Daryl Bay in anticipation of our short-term use. So what that means is, we are allowed to access it to do the work that we need to do to take it to the next step, which is using that area during our construction period. We have ongoing discussions with the province of B C that began well back in 2015 on the exclusive use of Daryl Bay land and foreshore for the four-year construction period only. And we've also recently completed an appraisal of the lower two parking lots and are actually prepared to make an offer today for the use of those two parking lots for four years. Now, we were, now, as you know, we've gone through a lot of different processes for this project. This one is your new lease process, and in terms of where we're at, we're just past the stakeholder and community feedback part of this lease process. So what are we asking for? Well, we are looking for the two, the lower two parking lots, not all of them. The lower two is a transit hub during the four-year construction period of our project. Our, our anticipated use is for, to move our people, that they will arrive by bus or personal vehicle, that we will transport them to, from Daryl Bay to our site, which you know is water access or air-only access, that it is going to involve the very occasionally use, small movement of goods, so certainly not a laydown area as we'd initially anticipated. We're talking about, say, somebody, we need extra food delivery or a small group of supplies, not a substantive moving of equipment. And safety and security will be our priority. That's going to, that's our business. So there will be onsite security, a pre-screening area, and electronic-controlled security checkpoint, which is very normal for any major infrastructure access, that you want controlled access before you take them close to the facility. So you want to do it before you move them. In terms of the area we're talking about, and, I'm sorry, that's my PowerPoint circle thing, so it's not exact. Darryl Bay, that there is a District of Squamish area, and this is not exact, but pretty close, to what District of Squamish is in charge of in terms of the parking lots that we are trying to lease. And then the blue area is the province of B.C., which is currently under Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure. And as you folks know, and maybe not everyone knows, in Squamish, that's actually part of the emergency management plan for transportation for the province. So it's seen as a critical piece of infrastructure in the unlikely event that something happens on the highway and people need to get out. So that's what the current use of that is. In terms of zoning, so we are, you know, our position and our understanding is that what we're asking to use those parking lots for is actually what it's zoned for within industrial use, and it still has grandfathered in. We could even potentially, although that's not our plan, to have bulk gas and fuel loading and storage facilities there. We were actually just wanting to load people.
Just people.
Just people. And in terms of future zoning, and I understand this is from my colleague Simon, who found the map, the OCP land use map portal, and currently, from our understanding of that, is that even the future zoning or use of that is consistent, and I need my reading glasses, but that does say facilities, utilities, and transportation corridor. So this was the map that we actually brought you last time we were here in May. So it has not been updated in terms of the consultation we've done, but back in May, this was our proposed sort of layout, if you will, with some of our priorities being, of course, safety, access, easy access for buses to come in and out. Our, one of our priorities is, of course, maintaining, you know, clear access for the property owner. And also, we had initially proposed some of where we would put our facilities, like a security trailer and washroom, closer to the property owner's property. But our commitment to her is to actually look at changing that layout a bit so we mitigate any noise closer to her property. And what we are proposing to build and what we're working with the ministry on is to actually build a new crewboat dock. So currently, the ferry ramp and the existing ferry ramp might be too large for our purposes, and that we're looking at, our plan is to actually build a new dock for the ferries of the scale that we'll need. So in terms of the update that we have since the last time we were here, is as per your process, we did have some consultation with B.C. Parks, Cedar Sky Gondola, the homeowner, and the campground, and the proposed developer. And in terms of just sort of, we do have a proper tracking sheet that we would be submitting to you, but in terms of the summary, in terms of B.C. Parks, it was actually just a welcome opportunity to have a discussion. And they are, because of their limited-sized parking lot at Shannon Falls, they were very interested in the traffic management plan. In fact, they let us know that one of the things they think's happening is that people are coming down the highway and they're slipping into Shannon Falls and they're parking there for the day because there's trail access and, which you shouldn't be doing, what we see people doing, is walking on the highway to the Gondola and the chief. Because the Gondola actually has a limit on how long you can park there. So that was their anecdotal information that we didn't have. But in terms of working together, we felt really good about, you know, finding solutions together. It was a good conversation. And of course, Cedar Sky Gondola, another really helpful.
I can comment on that.
Yeah, no, we're just saying it was feedback. We're not judging there. And we had a great conversation in terms of Cedar Sky Gondola, understand their use, that it's not year-round, but when it is busy, it's really busy, about twenty times a year on long weekends, gorgeous sunny days. And we had a very good discussion about, since our real approach is to be working Monday to Friday, that we felt, and typically we are not, or avoiding working at things at night or on long weekends, you wouldn't typically have all your crews out there on a long weekend, that we felt we can work together and where feasible, adjust some of our fencing, if you will, more, what do we call it? There's a whole bunch of terms for fencing.
Yes, just movable fencing.
Movable fencing, you know. And also to make sure that we were consistent in our approach to how they have their own shuttle bus. So we wanted to make sure whatever that shuttle bus route that they're using for the upper parking lots with their shuttle, that we would maintain the same sort of passage so that we all, you know, we're not surprising anybody who's using that parking lot. We want to work together. We did have a conversation with the homeowner. Certainly and understandably, her main concern is noise, obviously. So she's worked with, she's had film crews in there, and she gave us some really good feedback on simple things that you may not think about, which is if you're going to have warehouses, no matter how fancy they are, can you put them as far away from her property as possible? Because those doors, if you're a marathon runner like Ally or a former marathon runner like you, you know how loud warehouses' doors can be. So it's never simple. These are solutions we need to work on, but it was a really good conversation about it and understanding some of the stuff that she would like to see remain so that she has privacy. There is on MOTI area, there's some plants that are a bit, they're natural barriers and help for the privacy of her property, and so we certainly don't want to do anything that would make her feel more exposed on that wonderful property. And of course, as you know, we have spoken with the developer of Kahani, and that's probably the only place where we found that we weren't in alignment on the use, that they felt that they were interested at that time and when we had our meeting, in using, in having that parking lot as a park. And so our perspective was, well, we're looking at this as a short-term lease of what it's actually used for now, so we weren't in alignment, but we did feel that we probably can align on timelines, that we're ready to go in this October. So that was definitely an area where we disagreed. So in terms of the province of B.C., so as we mentioned, we have a license of occupation from the province of B, which is MOTI, for the land and foreshore of Darryl Bay's, Darryl Bay in anticipation of short-term lease use. Now, that doesn't mean we can just go in and start doing stuff. What it means is investigative purpose so that we can be better prepared to move forward. We do have ongoing discussions with the province for the exclusive use of Darryl Bay and foreshore for a four-year construction period, and that we're currently awaiting an MOTI decision on whether or not to grant us exclusive use or not. And then again, as we've discussed, I'm not always sure that people realize what a critical part to the emergency management plan that Darryl Bay is for MOTI. So while we may not see ferries going in and out of there or use by all intents and purposes, it is there and fenced to be used in the unlikely event of an emergency. And actually, I should mention, part of our discussions with them is that in the event that there is an emergency, what our needs are secondary. So our role is to get out of the way. So in terms of traffic management plan.
And that would be written into.
The contract, yes. Yeah, so you wouldn't, you know, if we had a ferry out there, we would have to hold it at our facility until it was cleared to use and then potentially move it somewhere else if it was a long-term issue. So they're very clear about that. We wouldn't compromise any emergency management plan. And then in terms of traffic management, so we'll be continuing to consult with the ministry, with yourselves, with the stakeholders, and Squamish Nation. Then in fact, even if we didn't want to do that, which we are, it's required of us under our environmental assessment certificate. And it also, in terms of timing, has to be in place thirty days prior to the start of construction. So that is the latest we could have that plan in place. And then in terms of an appraisal, so we did have Colliers International come in and do an appraisal of the lower two parking lots. It was that we do have a number of what the appraisal calculated for an annual rate based on fair market value, and we're actually prepared to start talking about that, what our possible lease rate would be today. But we would, we brought the lawyer here for a reason, and that conversation would be in confidence. And that's it.
Awesome. Just maybe I'll go with Neil quickly. Is there anything you want to add to any of the conversations we've heard right now?
No, I think that, you know, the missing piece right now today is MOTI. We tried to get them to get to a place where they can give us some direction on whether they would entertain exclusive use or not. Right now, under their ministerial order, they have very termalizing use. And the discussion we had with them, we did propose potential other uses as well, and whether they wanted to administer more than one tenant down there, or whether they would look at other uses of other tenants as well. So they are considering that as we speak, and hopefully we'll get back to some interesting questions.
Council, any questions, clarification at this point?
Thirty days before construction starts?
Would be the most.
For which?
For the sort of, so under our environmental assessment certificate, we actually, and Karen's in charge of this, we have to have a traffic management plan for construction, not even just Darryl Bay, thirty days before we start construction.
So.
But the, there will be consultation as part of that, so it is quite a process to go through because we have commitments with Squamish Nation as well to work through it. So it's a timeline of, you know, we've already started to develop it, but it is a bit of a long process. And so it won't be, you won't see anything until thirty days before. You will see it before then, but it's just the process to work through to get that.
So the completed with the consultation in it and our mitigation measures would be about complete thirty days before construction.
Is there a date for that thirty days, or are you saying you kind of just slowly work into the thirty days before?
So we can't, it's part of the environmental assessment condition. That has to be submitted to the environmental assessment office thirty days before construction can start. So for instance, you know, if we had January first as a date, we cannot, we have to hit that thirty days of that being submitted to them. So that's the clock that it runs from.
So just to clarify, it's thirty days for you to submit it? They may have comments back and changes to it within that thirty days. You have to submit it thirty days before you start construction.
Correct.
But it might not be finalized.
Correct.
It would be fair to say, Karen, as well, this plan has to coordinate with a lot of the other plans we're doing as well. Many, many, many other plans we're doing.
We have thirty days.
Many of which are sixty-day requirements and much longer requirements as well. This actually is one of the relatively easier ones in terms of lead-in time.
The point I'm trying to get at is thirty days from October or thirty days from next January or thirty days?
It would have to, we would be done substantively, including the consultation, including with yourselves and consulting with stakeholders, as well as even the EAO. We would have to be done before the end of the year.
Before the end of the year.
You're hoping to start construction early 2019 is what you're saying?
Well, we were looking at by, before the end of 2018. We currently actually have, through some of your folks are aware, that we're looking to currently continue some of our cleanup of the site. So with that schedule, it might push us into, we need to get that done before the fish window. So that might push the sort of official construction into early 2019, but right now, we're still getting into.
Yeah, and the reality is the more important for us, the more important date for us in a project of this size is when we give a notice to proceed. Once we give a notice to proceed to our principal contractor, we're on the hook for a billion-plus dollars at that point. Now, they need some time to mobilize, but that's clearly the more important date for us is when we actually finalize that contractual obligation. That will ideally be within 2018. So we really are coming up against what is our, from our point of view, the important date.
Yeah, and in terms of the timing, one of the reasons for the timing of October was the end of Cedar Sky Gondola's use of the upper portion, and also we need to get it ready.
Thanks, Julie.
So in the PowerPoint slide, it talks about buses and personal vehicles. But when I looked at your drawing, it was mostly bus parking and then a bit for security. So what are those other personal vehicles and where do they fit?
So there's also.
Maybe go back to that. There you go.
Yeah, so there's also parking in the, so there's bus parking on the one side. Those are the fancy little green guys. And that's where we anticipate in the height of our construction in the third year. So you're looking at sort of like our busiest time. The other part, there's other parking that's actually MOTI parking. So part of building in this plan is to say, like, worst-case scenario, personal vehicles and buses at the peak in the third year. So we always design based on sort of the most, what is the, worst-case scenario is terrible, but we are looking at making sure that we can fit everything we need to do in there. But in terms of that drawing, that shows you where the buses would be because they need to be able to get in and out, and then the other side is some parking.
Yeah, I understand it changes quite a bit in the second year as well, doesn't it? It's the first year where there's more cars, and those are phased out as more of the workforce comes online, and then it's much more of a bus operation.
Absolutely, yeah. Because you're looking at economies of scale. You're bringing in entire crews to work on specific things. So that's what that combination is there.
And then my other question is that previous delegation wondered why the buses have to stay there all day? Why couldn't they come and drop off and then park somewhere else?
Right, well.
So that both uses could be accommodated.
Well, that's a great question. The challenge is where else would we be parking those buses? So as you know, land is a premium right now in Squamish, so one of the things is a practical purpose. We know that the Gondola, in their wonderful success, has come up potentially with a compromise for their buses as well. So part of it is practical. Let's have them there. We also want to be able to control the access in the site as well. So, I mean, if someone had an, you know, had a reasonable short-term solution for that, we haven't found one yet. That's why we are still looking at keeping those buses there. And again, those are parking lots. They're underutilized right now, except at peak times with the Gondola. So when I went before our presentation last time, middle of the week, it was me, the fellow living in the trailer, the fellow anchoring in the, in the Darryl Bay, and a couple that showed up at lunchtime. There isn't a lot of use most of the time. So one of the reasons why we want to use it as a parking lot is because there really aren't that many other alternatives.
Could I just emphasize on the timing of that as well? I mean, everything will be permitted to take into account regular shifts. Some buses will be at expected times, but there will be latitude in there as well for some of the unknowns. Because again, on a project of this scale, things can happen that weren't anticipated. There could be change orders that come along. It's a brownfield site. There could be short periods of time when shifts have to be changed around to catch up, you know, to make up time, and that may result in some, you know, unusual traffic patterns at that time. We would expect that all to be within the latitude of the permits that are obtained. But you can necessarily predict that it will be just morning and night for all four years of construction. There may need to be some latitude in there.
Some movement during the day.
Some movement for when change orders occur and when unexpected things will occur on site that could suddenly require some changes to shifts, short-term.
And it needs to be said also that we're talking about the lower two parking lots. We're not talking about the, all of the parking lots.
My last question is, you know, this whole process over many, many years, people have tried to pit tourism versus industry. So how committed are you to pursuing exclusive use of that land? Or how much would you like to try and break down that argument that it's tourism versus industry and look at a solution that works for both parties here?
I think we're absolutely open to that. The reality is it's timing. So we've heard some amazing ideas today, but we're already really far down the processes. So our perspective is that we're ready to go. We want to get to work. And so we're looking at what we can, what we can work with. So the other main thing for us is safety and security. So I know, for example, that you did some consulting with Skytrain over safety, and I don't know if you had a chance to meet.
Well, hold on. I don't think we're going to be talking about my business. Yeah.
No, 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 sorry. I'm just trying to.
Jennifer, that line crosses the line.
Sorry about that. What I'm trying to give you an example of safety and security, so I can back it up no problem. So I worked at Skytrain for many years.
So you don't know anything about my business?
Okay, fair enough. I'm just trying to give you an example of safety and security, and I can give that whether you work there or not.
Okay, let's give the example.
Yeah, let's do that. So, thank you. So when you worked at, I worked at Skytrain for many years, and major infrastructure, movement of people, movement of staff. So when you visit Skytrain in Burnaby, for example, it's actually built in an old quarry. So you come up and you come to a guardhouse, and if you're an employee, you have a swipe, and that will get you through, and you say hi to the security person. And then you're still required to swipe into different buildings and things like that. That's security for your staff. And then in terms of visitors, I remember actually when the pre-ear visited, even the pre-ear was asked to show ID and had to sign in and come into the facility. And as a visitor, then you also go to the front desk and you sign in there. So our responsibility at the base level for our project during the construction period is to ensure safety and security at even our construction transit hub. So that's why we want to have controlled access, so that we can ensure safety and security throughout the construction period. In terms of any other uses, well, we're also needing to work with the local stakeholders like the Gondola. We're absolutely working with them, and that's an amazing place. We're absolutely wanting to work with the landowner, the homeowner there who has her own business. So I don't think that we're in opposition at all. the construction period. In terms of any other uses, well, we're also needing to work with the local stakeholders, like the Gondola. We're absolutely working with them, and that's an amazing place. We're absolutely wanting to work with the landowner, the homeowner there who has her own business. So, I don't think that we're in opposition at all. I think that we're willing to work together with what's available.
I'd best give the lawyer's version of this as well, though. Just, you know, that's kind of why I'm along with you as well, is to be absolutely open about how we see this going. Because we are at a stage in the process now where we are a long way along. We've spoken to a lot of parties at municipal level, provincial level. We have our permits. We're a long way along, and that's because we need to be developing our plans, and that's because we are at the stage of now finalizing our major construction contracts that are going to bid. Those bidders will also have to know what these plans are. They need to be more or less finalized for them. We haven't had a lot of feedback that welcomes the idea of sharing this site because, from our standpoint, from the lawyer's standpoint, looking at work safely, you see, looking at the health and safety elements here, thirty buses is actually alone, a lot of activity, dropping off, letting off, if thirty buses is an activity. The security, quite well, thirty at the height. And, you know, however we see the security being done, the security has to happen on shore. It's not going to happen at a site where we're dropping people off the boats. It does have to be managed at this point. And this is a dangerous site. This is a site that for some of the does not know what they're doing over there, it's a very dangerous place. We do have to be very, very careful about controlling who gets to that site that is only trained people who are meant to be there at the time. This will be a secure area for us. We have explored in the past the idea of sharing with parties. I know that we don't want this to be a competition between who's the best use for this. I mean, I think everything I saw about the presentation before looks fantastic. It looks great. But the reality is, we just are at a stage where we need to start finalizing plans now. And there has not, as I say, there has not been a lot in the contracting world that really welcomes the idea of this being somehow a shared-use site. Getting to, and this doesn't involve the council here today, but getting on to the, to the, beyond the foreshore and into the dock area at provincial level in MOTI, although they quite rightly have not made any decisions yet about exclusive use. I would be amazed. I haven't seen any sites such as this being put out of shared use for the time period. I do think, and I know we're on time, we're serious, I won't take up too much of the time, but you know, the one theme I would really like to introduce here is I really think we are on a win-win here. We're not trying to shut down the tourism aspects of this. We're only here for a four-year construction period, and we go away. And I can say, you know, as a projects lawyer, as what I do on the infrastructure lawyer, I've worked on projects like the one that was presented before, a 250 stall garage and an overpass over a highway. It's not going to be built by next summer. There's a lot of time to work on that. We've been through our public consultation. We've done all these things that that project will have to do. And some of that's years behind us, and some of that's years ahead of them. I don't think we're at all opposed to the idea of parties that have other great ideas for this site getting access while we're using it to come in there with professionals to say this is what we can do. And we're going to be out of here before you know it. Four years is not a long time in municipal time for someone else to talk about some other wonderful use for this site in the future. In the near term, it's a great site for us, and it does cause certain issues for us on our development timeline, which we're a long way into if we do have to talk about alternative uses now.
So, just to be clear, council directed this almost two years ago-
Yeah.
-to look at platform uses. This is not a new issue. You've spent two years to work on this.
We're well aware of that. You're worshipful. You had discussions. Yeah, it's very common.
Thank you. I think I have, Neil just wants to clarify something.
Yeah, I think the other layer to add is in our discussion with MOTI a few weeks ago, the, what came out of discussion with them is that they said that, you know, right now it is, it's a ferry terminal situation, hasn't really been for public use on a major scale. They asked, they didn't make any commitments in that meeting as it's been indicated by the team here. They asked to see documentation from WLNG around their certificate and operating certificate. Because they wanted to understand whether the drive for exclusivity with WLNG is something that is required through the certificate or something that is desired by them. And they were going to be looking at that, at that information. We haven't heard back from them yet because we discussed whether or not. They said if there was an operational reason why in the certificate that was very compelling, they would look at that. If it was something that was operational and desired, then it's something that they would then have to make a decision on whether they want to introduce more uses into that area. That's what they're considering right now.
Yeah, and just so, the council's not going to make a decision today. It's a committee meeting for one. We're also missing a couple of members for two. And there's still information, obviously, that council needs to understand. But I do want to make sure, before I go to Council Blackmore, if there is anyone particularly for the Gondola or anyone that's directly affected by this to come and share their thoughts on this before we sort of wrap up this portion of the meeting. Not right now. I'm going to come to you in a second, but I just wanted to give you guys a heads up that if you do want to add to this, please, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, I have some pretty big concerns about this exclusive use and bus parking as being a good use for that. I don't, I think there's definitely more opportunities for compromise on that, and I would encourage Wood Fiber to explore those things because, I mean, there's, I take the point that, you know, it's a little bit more inconvenient, but it's not hard to find a strip of land where you can park some buses in Squamish. And, you know, that's just not, that's not on for me. And, you know, MOTI will do what they're due, but this is municipal land, and we have jurisdiction over that. And I think it's in the best interest of Wood Fiber to take very seriously the other economic development opportunities we have that are long-term and frankly are going to mean more for our community because we know you're busing in workers from out of town. We've had lots of promises from Wood Fiber about local jobs, local economic development, and frankly, they've not pandered, they've not, they've not panned out. So, I think I would encourage applicants to really think hard about that. To think hard about what kind of contribution and what kind of reputation you have in this community amongst people who are not all anti-LNG. However, our pro-economic development for our community's future and public access was one of them. And, you know, I'm, I'm a little bit distressed by the attitude that's being shown today. It sounds very nice in nice polite language, and I appreciate that, but the reality is, is exclusive use means that that will not be available for our community.
I think a quick question. You did mention the, the property owner had mentioned, at least put the toilets on the other side, and you do have the toilets and wash cart. This isn't the final version of what you thought?
No, that was, that was what we consulted with. So, that's some of the feedback. We haven't had a chance to update that plan based on that. That was what we were consulting with. So, that was, the reason for showing it today was just to show how valuable the consultation process is for us because we've, we've obviously hadn't thought of that. So, we'll be updating this based on the consultation.
Great. So, I'll just quickly, is there anyone, Counselor Pryor, one quick question. And if you are someone who's affected by this, just come and join us at the table, and I'll acknowledge you.
Well, I, four years is not a long time. It might sound like a long time, but it's not a long time. I like that. I mean, I am happy to hear, and I so apologize for not being here for the previous presentation. Sorry about that. I'm really pleased to see that beautiful schematic there. But, you know, Wood Fiber LNG has been moving this project forward for years, and I'm sure this is the terminal that was built for the industrial site over there. And it just makes sense to me for that site to be used in this process for the construction. But, you know, I can hear the voices that you're still going to have to do a little more homework and see about shared use. But I certainly am totally supportive of Wood Fiber LNG and industrial access for their development.
I'd just like to add to Jason's comment through the fourth. That's okay. So, I think in regards to just local jobs and as someone that's in the community all the time and also on the chamber in Squamish, we get so many calls from people that either live in Squamish but have to work up north, so they're not here as permanent residents, or people that are having to commute from Squamish to other large development projects throughout the lower mainland. And these are red seal pipe bidders, and these are people that are working on big, huge industrial projects that are already happening.
I don't want to get off track here, Ally.
Yeah, and I just wanted to make the anecdotal comment because we were talking-
And that's a communication, that's a communication thing that you have to deal with. I'm just, I'm really on a timeline here.
I know. I just really wanted to emphasize that we are committed to looking at-
Thank you. Thanks, Ally. Sorry. It's just, we're really tight for, we appreciate that. And obviously, you've got some work to do to get people to work in the project. I appreciate that. I just, we're running a little over time. I just want to get to-
Kirby Brown, Cedar Sky Gondola. I'm going to speak specifically only to traffic and parking on this. It's not a comment on LNG or the other proponents. You know, so, the misconception, I think, is that Cedar Sky Gondola is driving the traffic problem in this area, and certainly we're a contributor in some part. Shannon Falls is great manager service by parking, eighty stalls. That's the vast majority of people parking in Darryl Bay. We run the shuttle bus down there, obviously to certain suit our purposes, but also to keep people off the highway who will naturally degress. With the no-post implemented at Chief Parking and the underparking at Shannon Falls, our parking lot is long-term parking. We have a three-hour sign. We don't enforce it. I don't like to say that in public, but we don't.
I'll be amped at you.
And we have Sherman in the parking lot. Makes it look like it's enforced just right on. So, Darryl Bay is vital for, until there is a longer-term parking solution, we're, you know, doing our part to fund transit. I see that as the solution, the idea of people coming from downtown by boat. It was a great idea so long as there's safe transit over the highway. But for me, it is about timing. It's about the next four years and the growth in visitation to this border. We see only increasing macroeconomic indicators aside, there's no reason to believe that we'll go the other direction. And in the meantime, what gets done. The LNG proponents have discussed with us allowing us to maintain most of the parking we currently have. And we've been honest in front of both that, that our parking needs in Darryl Bay really exist only on those twenty to thirty days of the summertime and holiday weekends where it happens to be sunny and under thirty degrees, et cetera, et cetera. So, it's not like we need that parking all the time. And if we can use it during those periods where, on weekends and holidays, where presumably the vast majority of the crews aren't working there, that may be sufficient for other purposes. Klahani, beautiful resort proposal. No negative comment on this other than, in the math of Darryl Bay, there's currently 295 stalls. We had at least for 175 of them, the balance of one-twenty-year district, and that's from the top that currently exists all the way down to two-thirds of the lower lot. So, the math simply put goes like this, 295 stalls, and Klahani does 250 underground and allows the 28 and 38, then there's 316 stalls. So, we lose the 295, get replaced by 316, so there's a net increase in 21 stalls in this area, period, for future growth for the Klahani, the traffic, whatever the traffic may be for the Klahani Resort itself and the growth of Shannon Falls, Cedar Sky Gondola, and the Chief overflow. So, I'm just saying that that's an issue that needs to be resolved in one way or the other. My only interest in this meeting is actually just to raise the flag around the vital nature of parking in Darryl Bay because it currently is unsafe in many regards for people. But it's much safer than no parking, as was exemplified by the no-post and the chief. As soon as those went up, we saw parking down the highway. And so, you, the people will come, and they will push their vehicles into places that they just shouldn't. So, to be safe and proactive, making sure that sufficient parking is available is my overall desire in this. And to the extent that you guys can move traffic around those holiday peak periods and allow as much traffic to exist in here, that's my interest in this comment. And any form of public transportation is beneficial by land or by sea. So, I'm all in favor of seeing some form of downtown traffic via water.
Thanks.
Yeah, sir. Sir, just to talk to you at the-
No, no, sorry, Jeff. You can't speak. You're at the table here. You have to come up to the table, and you're not next.
Thanks, Patty. Sorry. I know we're out of time. I'll make it really quick. Rick Pessant from the Klahani Campground. I'm the current manager of the lands. That site's been used for campground for fifty-plus years, longer, you know, than the district of Squamish has been in place. We currently have over a hundred camp sites, and we have hundreds of visitors visiting every single day. And the number-one question they all have as soon as they arrive on the property is, how do we get down to the water? Just yesterday, I watched a couple of young boys carry a rubber raft down there and try to access that Darryl Bay. I'm really concerned about this timeline of four years. I have never seen a construction project that happened on time. I think this four years could easily turn into six or seven years, and I'm really worried that we're losing an opportunity to put the sea into the Cedar Sky. We're going to lose access.
Thanks, sir. Counselor Chappell, one more. We're going to try to wrap this up, so.
Yeah, I don't see these as incompatible uses. I don't see that one negates the other. Darryl Bay is accessible, and, you know, you may not be able to build the entire project of Darryl Bay, this entire ring, all at once, but having some access while things are being built and compromise on all parties. I don't see this land as being one or the other. I agree with Kirby that the parking is, needs to be accessible. And I also agree with Counselor Blackmore that the buses do not need to be parked there all day. I don't see that as a, as a great use of that spot. If, I totally understand the need for security and moving your people and moving the workers to the site, but having compatible uses between what's needed for the community and having access to the water and being able to start the beautification of that area at the same time as moving your workers doesn't seem like it's such an incompatible use and would make, would make the public really happy about having better access to that site as well. And I really see it as only being able to find parking for thirty buses, which even, I look at Pretend Beach Construction and those blank areas down there as if you're just dropping people off. Those buses can move if they're all day just being parked. So, I would just suggest that everybody continue to work together, and obviously, the ministry is involved. But I don't see that, I mean, we, we still don't have a DP or anything with the land, so I think this is a little bit putting the cart before the horse as far as Darryl Bay and the financing of the project and everything. And moving forward on all fronts would be an amazing thing with all the parties being able to speak to each other. Because you can have your security pass, the buses, the bus, you know, buses come in, drop off people, and then go through security gates, just like you spoke about with, with transit. But moving those buses outside so that there is more public parking during the day would be amazing, and I think it would be a crux, or even if you block off that, yeah, I guess it's a crux, if the buses come in and pick up, if there's some alternative way to move people, even if the pedestrians and the workers could come to a different spot for a pickup. I think that there's a lot more compatible, compatibility between the two projects than the adversarial talk that's happening right now.
Just in response to Kirby's question about parking. So, obviously, it would be done if we're, we'd actually talk in a similar room like this to come up with scheduling to ensure all stakeholders are met. We wouldn't, the intention is not to close off all parking until the, until the parquet is built. It could be a way of timing. Keep the existing stuff, build the parquet, build the overpass, and maybe it's a bigger parquet. This was just a number that we spoke of. Maybe there's some other alternatives. But we need a starting point to be at the table to negotiate, or not, sorry, not negotiate, that's not even the right word, but to come up with a strategy to fulfill the needs we have. So, that's, hopefully that will alleviate your concern. Because the last thing we want to do is shut off all parking. Well, now we're going to build it. But we could build the infrastructure on the Symphony Resorts property, which probably doesn't have access. It's not used for parking right now. And then, once that's built, then we can go on with the next stage. So, a bit of a seamless thing. If we can look at that, show the true parking needs, you have all that information, we can do it. The other thing is, we've wanted this consortium. We've, with Kirby, two years ago, with Peter Jarvis from Wood Fiber LNG, and John Heilich and Bador, we have been speaking about working together. And that's, we're not saying, no, we're not saying we want exclusive use. We just want to say, we think this is too great of an opportunity for Squamish. Public access to the water is too great. And I know you said you don't see anyone down there when you stop by. I live in this community. I go down to Darryl Bay all the time. That place is busy with people lunching their kayaks, putting their toe in the water, people stopping, eating their lunch, looking at the water. So, to say that it's only very few people, maybe it's just when you come here during the day, but weekends, it's busy.
I don't think we're saying that it's not good to see on weekends.
Yeah.
But, so that's, we do want to cooperate with any person that wants to do it. I think there's some shared use opportunities.
Yeah. So, I'm just going to try to wrap this conversation up. Certainly, I guess it was almost two years ago when Neil originally brought in the request for expressive interest on this area. Counsel's goal was that all the groups work towards something, a collaborative opportunity that provided public access but met people's needs in terms of their business and work plan goals. I think that's what I'm hearing around the table is definitely counsel sentiment still, that exclusive use is not necessarily something that we would support at this point. And what I'm hearing on the table, just generalizing, granted, this is a council, it's not here. Some of it, and I look to Neil, I don't know if he has any more to add, but some of it is obviously if there's an imperative from the provincial government's point of view that you have to have exclusive use, that's different than you'd like to have exclusive use. And they're considering that in their way of how they might move forward with license and occupations for this area. So, I think, I think I've said enough there. Yeah. So, you've heard, you've heard maybe here?
I don't want to have the last word. I'm looking for the last word, but I do feel I need to address a couple of things.
I always have the last word, just so.
I'm certainly, I know we're closing, so there are three issues that I just wanted to raise because they were raised, and for the record, I feel I need to say something.
Please do.
You give me ninety seconds. I promise you, I'll keep it under all that.
About the time, time.
Okay. The first, okay, good. Well, the first is just on the idea that there was a sentiment here that we somehow hadn't had our homework- Well, the first is just on the idea that there was a sentiment here that we somehow hadn't had our homework or were leaving things undone because we hadn't properly consulted and were considering other plans. I think just for the record, I'd like to state that we have done so. We haven't seen how we can work with those that we can, such as Sea to Sky, where we recognize there is compatibility. I will fully recognize that there were previous discussions a couple of years back where we really hoped we could work out use of, or exclusive use. We've been through that. We probably haven't done as good of a job as we should have in continuing communication with those players. But as our plans evolved, because things get a little crazy in our project and get very busy towards certain times, to let those players know that it was looking less and less like we could give anything other than exclusive. And it is not looking realistic for us now, our plans. On the use, we are currently, in terms of looking at other shared use, we're one hand clapping because we don't have, we can't work out a sharing plan unless we have a very, very precise, specific plan to share with. And with respect to the other parties that have come here today, and again, there's some great plans there, but we're hearing such, we might build the parquet, and after we've done that, we may have another plan for the parking. This is years away and we're dealing with, we are doing the time periods now of weeks and months to finalize things. We can't wait for other plans and we can't finalize a sharing plan until we know exactly what we are sharing with. We are closing down our contracts in the next few weeks and months. So that's on the sharing. On the bus, I'm gonna make a 15-second comment, but really, on the buses, there's some speculation that the buses are only there to bus some people from the other side. I just have to correct the record on that. We spent a great deal of time looking at housing options in this area. They're not finalized yet, it's a very difficult thing for a project. And these workers of this scale, there is no conspiracy to be using the buses. We bring people in as far away as possible. But it's a necessary aspect of getting people from anywhere, including within the Squamish limits, to a certain point where they get onto a boat. So I just really have to correct, but it's purely speculation and the comment that was made on that. And in terms of the timing, you know, the timing here, we are gonna be out of here in four years, as I say. That is a very short period of time. We're hearing about, you know, we might go over time, four to seven years. I'd have to talk all day, give education on how project finance works for a project to this scale. Most Canadian projects in this region have been mining, they've been corporate financed, and the company takes a hit. We are being financed by commercial lenders on a limited recourse basis. For those that want to go look up how that works, it does mean you have to be absolutely certain and you don't get any money until you've already signed up your supply, signed up your offtake. And these projects are so incredibly punitive. If you run overtime on that, the liquidated damage is just so incredibly punitive for our contractor. Granted, within this industry, a month or two might happen. It is not going to be four to seven years of project bankrupt before that happens. And our lenders would never give us the money if that was even possible.
So just quickly, you mentioned employee housing. You currently don't, in your EA, have work camps. I know you've been exploring work camps. Are you looking to open up the EA so you can absolutely legitimize these work camps?
We're not here to discuss that today because it's obviously, it's a big topic in itself, a housing topic.
You broke it down, didn't you?
Yeah, no, that's absolutely fair. I'm just suggesting in terms of what is absolute, the fact that we're using buses does not indicate anything in terms of an absolute plan to bus parties in from afar. And I'm just really correcting that comment. There's nothing proven by using buses, or busing people from wherever we go.
Time will tell.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. You've given us lots to think about at this point. Maybe we'll just take a five-minute recess. I know there's lots of people here for this. Appreciate both and all parties to contribute to the conversation. Thank you. We are back in our preview of the whole agenda for Tuesday, July 17th. And we are on to item 41. And this is the final draft of our Squamish Marine Strategy that is up for endorsement. Well, and I just want to say, I thought it was really well done. Super, thank you so much.
No, we'll pass it on.
Done, thank you so much. Well, I didn't know why I liked it, but it's like, here are the actions. It didn't get all overly fluffy and, you know, it was like bam bam bam, this is what we need to do. We need to do a lot, but anyway, over here. I don't want to ramble your presentation, but I already did, sorry.
Thank you, not to worry. Thank you so much, members of council. And for those joining us from home, my name is Sarah McJanet, planner. Today Sandra Basago, Pacifica Blue, and I were presenting the final marine strategy for endorsement. And we're looking for council's green light to bring the immediate actions forward in the 2019 budget process. So for this final edition, before you, we refined the final draft that we presented to council on June 5th. And so based on that, the council feedback and discussion and the roundtable feedback, we did make further edits. We also made additional edits based on incoming stakeholder commentary that was continuing to come in. So we received some very detailed commentary from the Squamish Environment Society, as well as feedback that we received from the Wildlife Management Coordinator from the South Coast Conservation Land Management Program. We shared it with many, many agencies. And we also sat further with Randall Lewis of Squamish Nation and separately with Megan Latimer of our Emergency Management Coordinator. We wanted to work through the spill response action. So as you will have read in the report, in the strategy, we ended up elevating, as an immediate action, a cluster of actions in fact, around marine spill response. So in the strategy, what you'll see is immediate priority around affirming and coordinating our marine spill response roles and resources with lead agencies. And further to explore a regional integrated operational plan for unified response and house sound. So in sitting with Randall afterwards, and he shared with us and helped us access the Greater Vancouver Integrated Spill Response Plan, which he highlighted for us, which was a really great example. And so we did a little bit of review there and also met with Megan and talked further about some actions around developing a specific annex to our District of Squamish All Hazards Plan specifically for marine spill response. And also further to, we had in the strategy previously identifying waterfront support sites, but also an opportunity to work with other Sea to Sky, like house sound communities around undertaking an operational exercise, for example, and working with an existing Sea to Sky Regional Emergency Management Working Group. And so it's something that we might even bring to the house sound community forum as well to talk further about. So there was some really good stuff there. Big picture, so we now have the final strategy that has the vision, guiding principles, focus areas, objectives, strategic directions, and over 70 prioritized actions across the focus areas. And so the strategy outlines the roles and areas of responsibility that we will be fully flushing out as we dive into action planning. As you know, most of the actions are being driven by and led by the district. So we're the lead and champion for 61 actions with a supporting role for 11 actions. And many of them are already underway in fact, and being integrated within kind of our regular work planning. But as we tackle these action items through the rounds of action planning, we are really focusing our efforts and we're always going to be coming back to those jointly held priorities where the collective action is needed and can be supported by shared resources. So that's really the good focus piece. We've got 12 immediate actions for 2018 to 2020. I've got six on this slide and six on the other. So I was just gonna blast through those and then finish with just the next steps. So if you're good with that, I'll just highlight those very briefly. So again, following our May workshop with council, we're gonna be bridging with and convening the sub-working group of SEMC to explore the shared leadership and mandate for working together into the future. We're gonna be working with the Harbour Authority, potential to work together with expanding their role and responsibility and partnership within the inner harbour. Thirdly, looking to work towards further establishing marine habitat protection goals and objectives for SEMP, the SEMP estuary area, but then beyond. And then from that, working with regulatory tools and zoning updates for protected areas, identifying, funding, and undertaking specific coastal foreshore compensation projects, playing a supporting role with the Squamish River Watershed Society, the Nation of Fisheries and Oceans Canada around their estuary restoration project on the training dike. The cluster of marine spill response actions that I just spoke about is number six, which we would lead in collaboration with Squamish Nation Coast Guard and the province, hopefully. And then further to that, we have our immediate actions identified for developing a water quality framework, both for human and environmental health. So there's some pilot work that's happening already on that front. Working with and supporting the Squamish Harbour Authority in promoting and achieving the green marine designation for marine facilities within the community. Further initiating scoping and engaging on a dredge program, priority navigation maintenance activities and funding strategy, which is very timely given recent elevated priority that's been identified by other partners within the community. We'd also like to inventory assess and formalize marine industry-related and commercial transportation routes through a local marine transportation and access plan. Further explore potential for short-term visitor moorage and other facilities, accommodations, transit to and from marinas and destinations. That's under our marine gateway focus area. And finally, this is a big one. It is to identify and secure locations and investment for current and future marine infrastructure, facilities, and amenities as we redevelop the waterfront. And so the idea of sort of having a bit of a checklist came up at the last council session. And certainly, appendix two, we have identified from our work with the community all those priority infrastructure pieces that really can't be forgotten about and need to land and be managed within the marine realm. So those are the 12. Now we have a nice round number, 12 immediate actions. They're not in order there, those are all sort of top-level actions. And so what you can see from this image in terms of our overall implementation framework, we've got the priority actions identified. So for the remainder of Q3 and into Q4 of this year, we're going to be scoping and flushing out those immediate priority actions. You know, also working to advance the other 72 or the other actions as well. And then to bring forward later in Q4 2018, Q1 2019, specific actions and associated budget. And we just want to highlight also that in addition to like dedicated special project funds for specific actions, we are going to be looking at sort of a base budget for implementation of the marine strategy. And that would actually help us support work with the working groups. Because the key to implementation will be to collaborate in community, working with our existing SEMC table, but also other working groups, sub-working groups that might be initiated to work through specific actions. And then we'll be coming back to council on an annual basis to report back on our progress and then reevaluate the priority actions. So next steps, as I said, are resourcing those immediate actions. So you'll be seeing those scoped pieces. And that will involve a lot of intergovernmental and community collaboration work, looking for funding and partnerships, and then into the working group action planning. So without further ado, there's two recommendations that are before today that council endorsed the July 17th 2018 Squamish Marine Action Strategy and that staff bring forward identified immediate actions for scoping and inclusion in the 20, that should, oh, that's funny, in the 2019 to 2024 budget process for resourcing consideration. I guess that's like the next wave of budget.
Any questions for clarification purposes on the plan itself? Councillor.
I can't believe all those people left the room. She was all over there looking. On the environmental, I mean, on the green shores, I didn't get that clearly how we're gonna deal with all the waterfront development down there. How are we gonna avoid this sheet pile at all?
So just around green shores treatment, so within the strategy, under the coastal ecosystem focus area, we have a lot of strategic direction around supporting habitat enhancement projects over time to ensure that we are maximizing opportunity. That has to be done in tandem with consideration for the Integrated Flood Hazard Management Plan and the Coastal Flood Protection Strategy. So there's more work to be done around specific sea dike design and other opportunities for habitat enhancement. Green shores is sort of a trademarked piece that entails many different types of treatments in different types of shoreline. So for us, it's gonna be at estuary. And within a lot of the Mapquem Line channel area, a lot of those reaches on the western side have been identified for sheet pile. That being said, there is an action that's identified for sea dike design for the remaining sections. And what opportunities do we have to integrate more habitat enhancement within the flood protection structure? So we've been looking at opportunities, for example, like in the city of Vancouver, at the convention center where they do habitat skirting. You know, some of the habitat enhancement features that have been incorporated into the sea dike have been reef balls for Sirocco and Mistral. But we need to figure out, like, is that actually the most effective way of enhancing habitat for that area? But there are gonna be some areas of unconnected shoreline where we can do like the more traditional green shores treatment.
Small sections.
Yeah, but so we definitely captured that. It's a piece that's been raised multiple times. We will be looking at that probably next most closely with the Wurneck Park. So we've been talking with engineering about the RFP and the design for that section of sea dike. And so as we go, are there other opportunities for habitat enhancement?
Yeah, because I just wanted to, the southern part for SOPC, of course, that's 98% of our waterfront. Is it all sheet pile?
I can answer that, no, the east side sheet pile or west side green sheet?
And the south side?
It's a pile.
No sheet pile.
But yeah, I think where Sarah's right is, there are certain limitations with space for the sheet pile. So what we've got to do is figure out how to mitigate that as best we can.
Any other questions for clarification purposes in here? The only, and I just want to make sure, things like the, for example, the Ocean Watch Task Force, it was meant to sort of be a limited time, go through the Ocean Watch report and pull out action items. So I just want to make sure that whatever's sort of referenced to specifically about something may, or it's whatever it transitions into.
It's a great point. And certainly, there will be things that are completed or, you know, that the, as things are accomplished, they will sort of fall.
Yeah, there'll transitions.
The Ocean Watch Task Force, I've certainly been to several meetings with councillor Race. And one of the key actions that that task force is bringing forward is this marine reference guide that is a decision tool, which, and actually Sandra and I had a call with Fiona Beadie of the Ocean. Corrie. Coastal Ocean Research Institute. And there's, it's actually fantastic because a lot of the actions that we have highlighted in the marine strategy are very much aligned with the desired outcomes and what will come out of that. And Fiona actually requested an opportunity to come forward and provide an update to council.
Yeah, I get all the emails, so I think that's great.
So yeah, so work will continue on that. And all the house sound communities have funded that initiative and then they've sought other funding. So it's well-supported at this point and in good hands with Fiona Beadie managing that project. And I think it will be a good tool and a resource for Squamish.
So this is more of a fluffy question. I shouldn't preface it like this is a hard-hating question. Like, what was your biggest learning as you went through this in terms of, was there a sort of a few aha moments? Or do you think, oh, I didn't, like, this was new, or this was a different thing, or this is, I didn't expect this? Was there any sort of big, very, excellent question? Oh, good. Yeah, you go first, no, thanks.
Well, I think the big one was bringing stakeholders together for the first time. I didn't realize, even when we had the Marine Life Panel, Marine Expo, I thought, oh, no big deal, bring people together. But a lot of people there said we've never done this before. And for me, that was a surprise because I work in engagement. So I thought, oh, excellent, good work, Sarah. Like, you know, you brought a group of people together. And I think it's a start to ongoing who knows what. We didn't want to presuppose that, but yeah, I was really encouraged by that.
Yeah, I remember when we had the, was it last summer? We had an initial meeting about Watershed Society's project. And then this was the first time we've ever been roomed together. So, you know, it's a bit of an unfortunate thing, but also like, okay, good, we're on the right path. It really makes a difference when people are actually conversing.
And I have one more, but maybe other, Sarah.
Yeah, I mean, I think there, my biggest learning for this project was that it was exciting to try something new. And in terms of that shared leadership piece and like exploring what that would look like, I think there's still a lot to come. But I think we started with that as such an important tenet and bringing in the idea that, you know, there are other activities and things that are going on within the community that are, that we can get on board with and help support. So we can lead some of these things, we can support, but to bring them all together and try and organize them into more of an aligned purpose around specific objectives. And to go through that exercise with the community and the stakeholders was really positive. And I think we, there was buy-in when we all sort of started that together and kind of moved through it. So I thought that was awesome.
Quickly, Sandra, you have one more.
And you kind of mentioned, and the only thing I would add is the nuance that we're all players in our community, and we are a waterfront community. So everyone really here that lives in Squamish or regionally that has visits or passes through are connected and have a responsibility. So it was shared leadership, shared approach, but also that those, just that the fact that this document exists shows that the district is opening up a whole realm. It's like a file. It's like now a realm of work. So there's a lot of responsibility there, but it's really a relief that the district is doing that.
Counselor.
So on action items, you know, I think of Rose Park, Upper Reaches of Mapquemblin Channel, and of course, our waterfront development, others named, I guess, the ongoing self-land property. Is there any action items, someone comes along and wants to do something? We do have this report to kind of give us direction, but do we have to consult more before we move forward on stuff?
I think definitely the intention is to consult as we're action planning. So it's about bringing in all the, all the groups that have a stake in whatever the action is, bring them in, work with us, and that's the whole working group framework. So a lot of these actions will be working closely with SEMC, but there are additional working groups that might be struck, like around the dredging. It's going to be SEMC and then like a much bigger group.
But on development permits? Working group on the development?
We'll be working mostly with this, like, with SEMC around, once we figure out sort of that mandate, what we heard and what we know is that there's a high interest and desire to review and have a look at and sort of be a bit advisory, to continue to be advisory around development within the marine realm and asteroid.
There is development interest on sort of loxer property, for example. How do we, that property there wouldn't be sheet pile property at this point because nothing's ever come forward. So how would we, how would this strategy help us in getting, being sure along that section, for example?
I think in the same way as the rest of the channel. We're looking at this document as well as the Integrated Flood Hazard Management Plan. So the east side of the channel is kind of looked as a sheet pile.
I think, but I think what Counselor Price is saying is that we may not want to do that. We may want to figure out other ways to encourage developers, maybe it's density homing, maybe it's whatever, to not do sheet piling because I think we have a better understanding that maybe not environmentally very good.
Well, that was, the point I was kind of getting at was, in our vision, we're expecting sheet pile all down the east side of downtown. And so I thought, well, no SOCCs have got that in the plan. That's in the plan, so we can't really say, oh, you can't do that anymore. I was trying to think of other sections that didn't have that in the plan. The loxer area is one.
And that whole...
And Upper Reaches of Black Channel and our apartment.
So I don't think there's any plans for sheet pile in the Upper Reaches?
No, there aren't. You're right, there are maybe opportunities in the future. Those lands are part of the subarea plan for the ocean front, but they still have to be resolved. So there will be opportunities. We will have to look at flood protection in depth.
But even that subarea plan, does that mean it's etched in stone that it's sheet pile?
No, it's a study area within the Integrated Flood Hazard Management Plan, how that all ties in, so.
It is in the IHI.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
No, it's not. There are some practical limitations, given that everything else of Northern South is, there are some practical limitations, but that doesn't mean it has to have to have the sheet pile.
Yeah. You know, I mean, because you know that dramatically affects the value of the development because you lose a two-to-one slope for your dike, so you're losing right mid-land. I know that when we looked at the original charrette for the downtown, looked at multi ways of fitting, you know, trails, and some areas it would be sheet piling, in some areas it would be stepped, in some areas, you know, we looked at as our waterfront was built, it would be all these uses. And then, SODC came along, I wasn't allowed in the room to talk about all that. But there is a loxer, so, which is a substantial piece of waterfront in our downtown. And hopefully, we'll just mark that down that it doesn't necessarily have to go sheet pile. And that's the way we, the way we kind of look at it now, we just go, oh, that's a sheet pile. If that's not the case, I think we should be clear to the next council or whomever that we could pocket plant and do different finishes along that section that might make better waterfront water nicer.
So just, I just want to build on that because unfortunately, Gary, this came back to council this year that we were going to sheet pile one L. The council went, no, we're not. And it was driven through the Integrated Flood Hazard Management Plan, that type of treatment on that shore. I think particularly on the Mapquemblin Channel, to facilitate development just because of the narrow strip of land, council over the days said, yeah, we'll consider sheet pile in there. It got written in on the east side in the SODC Land Development Agreement. But I think I would like to, I agree with Counselor Prior, that we, I'd like to figure out a way that maybe that doesn't need to happen, that we figure, that we have some other way of determining, some people don't lose land value necessarily, but we do get green shores. I suspect the Squamish Nation has land right across the way from the SODC, and having a hard sheet pile on the east side will negatively impact the west side and their lands over there. So it may be a conversation that can be opened with SODC, and it hasn't been etched in stone with the landowner to the north of SODC, south of, I guess, Vancouver Street.
That's right.
So, I mean, I'm definitely leaning towards, let's see if we can have language in our strategies that make sure that we're not just setting it up for sheet pile and it's actually opened the door for other solutions that get us to a green shores, I'm putting quotations, but another, that's a trademark term, but essentially a ecologically sensitive shoreline area. And I just want to make sure this document isn't precluding that. Similarly, I think we should probably revisit little pieces of the Integrated Flood Hazard Management Plan, so it's not sort of setting it up for that.
I think that's the bigger conversation piece for council and engineering and like to look at it from the perspective of the Integrated Flood Hazard Management Plan because it's part of a well-coastal flood defense kind of piece. So in terms of doing different treatments, kind of hot work along, like, that requires a lot of engineering considerations. So I think it's a bigger conversation.
I'd like to see green shores all the way up to, like, from Vancouver Street, south, I always get it on the ground, but south, at least as open to conversation because I think it's worthwhile doing. And there's ways of integrating that in with the more sheet pile not, and see it in Vancouver all the time along the whole frontier area.
There's nothing in the strategy in terms of the actions that preclude that at all. And there, we did, I was trying to find this specific.
Two B.
I just want to make sure there's language in there that's driving it to that conclusion in particular, sorry, two, four, zero. And it's clear that ultimately, having a green shoreline is our ultimate goal.
Sorry, on page 22.
Oh, there we go. Thank you. So right now, we have an action, integrate and monitor habitat enhancement measures within coastal flood protection structures and sea dike designs as identified in the Integrated Flood Management Plan, and actively monitor habitat impacts over time. And then secondly, research, identify and pursue green shore shoreline treatment options and certification for coastal sites and reaches. This is like largely unconnected, we said, but that's based on the guidance in the Flood Hazard Management Plan. But certainly, we tried to, in this, in that spirit, tried to elevate that piece. But I think it's worthwhile that council kind of bring forward as an item to have that discussion. And probably the, an early opportunity to do that would be with the next design segment, which would be the...
I just want to maybe just get a pulse from the rest of councils. Is this generally shared direction? We'd like to see our language driving us more green shores rather than sheet pile? Counselor.
I think it's really difficult with CLORIS to talk about green shores and sheet piling in this. I think it's going to be different treatment, I mean, on the land and the land use, the integration of the shore. And I totally agree with staff is that it doesn't preclude, none of this precludes either treatment as long as it's done in the correct manner. And there's going to be places that we want to raise land and include sheet piling. For instance, our park, we had talked about a myriad of things, including putting parking underneath, which would require a sheet piles treatment, whereas there's other parking. Yeah. So it depends on the land use, and I think that's, each chunk will have to be treated environmentally, with environmental sensitivity towards the shore so possible.
So you agree generally? I mean, there's going to be exceptions, obviously.
Yeah, absolutely.
The overall intent is that we, we as ecologically friendly shoreline as we possibly can?
Yeah, well, I just think that it should be, I mean, I know the word is in there. And so we'll adopt a marine strategy. And the guys that are doing the loxer property are going to go, oh, well, we'll just put the sheet pile down as far as we can get it. We're going to gain as much land as we can. So whatever those properties are in our, we'll go to the ministry and we get as far as we can and we'll put our sheet pile. There's nothing strong enough in this document that says, oh, before you start planning all that sheet pile stuff, there has to be a conversation with council and staff about potential for alternative dike works that could, you know, like, when I say green shores, I mean, there's dikes that are built, that have pocket plantings built right into them. And, you know, it might be a two-to-one slope with rock, and then at the lower levels, they have a whole bench full of seagrasses, and then the dike goes up around it, and then they have, and I just don't think that there's wording in there right now, at this particular moment, strong enough considering we're getting that development coming at us right now.
And if, the language in this document needs to be bolstered, but it sounds like fundamental without being driven to be Integrated Flood Management Plan. So I think we need a bit of a touch base on that because we, I don't want our plans to be contradictory. And I think the overall goal is to have good green shores principles as the heart of what we'd like to change.
And in the action strategy, we didn't want to duplicate, this was not, this is not the Flood Hazard Management Plan, so we purposely tried to, you know, align with, but also recognizing that there's opportunity and a need to look for green shores.
I think it's like the IFH management plan to align with this.
With respect, if you want to regulate development, this isn't the document to do. That should be in the zoning bylaw and as the manus. If council's hard on this, we can look at what we need to change in the Flood Hazard Management Plan. I don't think this is the place to try and solve that problem.
No, we just don't want this to further bolster.
We hear council, they're on this issue. We can have Mr. Wickham.
Go ahead, Ted.
Well, just, you know, just a point on that is, you know, the district owns some land further down, quite a long skinny stretch, potentially, you know, when you look at the whole waterfront walkway around there, I mean, we have an opportunity, may have an opportunity to do some pretty spectacular waterfront stuff. Well, I just, so to Gary's point, adoptive or do we need that document, Gary, that you just mentioned?
The Flood Hazard.
Or fixative first reading of the zoning bylaw. It's a clear direction.
Counselor.
Thanks. So the, I totally agree with Gary. This document's a guiding document and really sets up relationships more than anything. It sets up some amazing, you know, collaborative, it sets the tone of who will talk to who. And I think that was a big mess before, and now having that in our document is a really great thing. The marine economy part, very short and sweet, not really a lot related to the land use planning. And I wouldn't do anything to stall this document. I just would sort of expand on the nine, 10, 11 points because it says in that...
Sixteen.
It's points nine, 10, and 11, inventory assess and finalize marine industry-related commercial transportation routes. So, and this again, it's mostly about our marine routes and everything else, and the routes going through, but not a lot about the land use, but there's other documents that address that as well, so.
A lot of the marine economy actions are related to ensuring that there's effective and safe access for marine industry and like that, those connectivity pieces in terms of upland and waterfront sites. So those key linkages, mapping those out, sort of identifying and trying to reduce conflict in those areas. And then the biggest, probably the biggest action within the marine economy piece is around the dredging, a long-term dredge and maintenance program that's been lacking. And so that's a huge, a huge...
The other thing I'll note is, yeah, you're right, we tried to pick two to three key top actions in each focus area, but when you look back to the main document, there are others that do have that connection. I'm just looking for the language and I see, okay, we have the connections here, and they're just initiatives that will come up over time.
Definitely relate to the documents as well, so.
Yeah.
That's good. Thank you. Quick question. Were there any discussions of the workforce housing, floating workforce housing in water license areas? Just hypothetically, a Ford is W L N G, needs workforce housing over on their site. Does this document speak to how or when, or why that may or may not be considered? Did the working group talk about that at all, or would that be in their zoning bylaw here?
We, a lot of the discussion focused around short-term moorage as opposed to housing on the water.
So how would, how would we do that type of application, for example?
I think something like that, we would look at our OCP and the zoning bylaw to determine whether it's a fit, if they use fits, the land use.
So they need to be a T U P or some sort of zoning addition definition?
Yes.
Okay. But our zoning would extend to that water license area for this type of use?
It depends where it is. If it's within the district of Squamish, it's covered.
It is not within the district.
It's covered, yes. I don't know if the zoning would allow for it. I suspect not. So it would probably have to be a temporary use permit or rezoning.
But it's not worth having that in this? It's better to do that through a zoning bylaw and our...
I think so. And I think if we want to establish some sort of direction, then that should probably be in the official community plan.
Okay. Thanks. Any other questions for staff? Counselor, any questions found yet? I thought it was really good, a really good, crisp, to-the-point, action-oriented, exactly what the council envisioned, and really inclusive and great collaboration from the community. So I want to thank everyone who did participate in it. And I know we always ask our community to be overly participatory, and we really appreciate their input and expertise. So well done. Thank you very much. Awesome. So there is a recommended motion that District Council endures the July 17th, re-action strategy and bring forward immediate actions for scoping inclusion in the 2019-2024 budget process for resourcing consideration. So that's just saying, start thinking about it in work plans, but come forward through budget cycles and by your financial planning. Anything you've heard today that might cause minor modifications to this? Or this is just committee, so a final version will come. Or this is just committee, so a final version will come, council, did you see anything that may? Okay. Excellent, I'm looking for a motion moved by councillor Elliott, second to councillor Pryor. All those in favor? Opposed? Benny?
Thank you, Benny. I do, I would like to put out a motion for council to consider, just based on our earlier conversation, and I'll move it, the council director, mayor to articulate to Ministry of Transportation, District of Squamish preference for multiple users and not exclusive use to own WONG in the Darryl Bay offshore and water license area. Seconded by councillor Blackman. Just speaking to it briefly, generally the tone of the conversation was we want to see consideration of all these things in that area. We don't have jurisdiction on this, this is something that MOTI will, will decide whether or not to give a license of occupation to one entity or to multiple entities. We are simply articulating that we would like them to consider multiple users in that area and not exclusively.
Thanks. I do worry about stunting the industry going down there because they do have, the security thing is the only thing that's stuck in my mind. I don't see that as being collaborative, you know, as being something that could be collaborative in short term. But I wonder about, you know, maybe it's not the same users in the same space, but allowing build, starting to build the infrastructure for the future. Maybe it's not they have access to a dock or anything, but allowing collaborative use of the space so that they can actually start building their infrastructure. I think that would be horrible to prevent working of infrastructure. But having people down there full time while they're trying to have industry down there does, you know, as far as their security concerns, that was the only part that resonated with me.
And Neil had articulated that what MOTI determined is if there's, they must have because of EA parameters or whatever, they must have exclusive use or they just would like to have exclusive use. We're not going to, I don't think it's our place to maybe make judgment on that, that's MOTI's determination. We're just saying our preference is that, you know, provided all the safety things are done properly, our preference is that it is inclusive and not exclusive down in the Darryl Bay. Councillor.
Well, to your motion, you should say that a solution should be found for collaborative use. Why didn't you write down in that?
That the district's preference is for multiple users and not exclusive use.
I think it should say something like, district feels so.
We can say multiple collaborative uses.
Well, yeah, the solution should be found, could be or not, should be found or could be found, but allow.
Allow the word.
Yeah, because if they are about to, I mean, I could see the potential for collaborative use. I mean, Sona, this park, and while it's empty during the week, plus this park up there. You know, I mean, I just, I saw more collaboration than what's taking place.
Anyone else want to comment? I called a question, all those in favor? Opposed? Thanks very much, everyone.